Okay, we're live now. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for September 15, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. 10:00 a.m. session, no public testimony will be taken during this review session. The first case to be discussed is 2019 27 BZ 4533 18th Avenue, Brooklyn.
So initially, we considered adjourning the application for incompleteness and at the applicant's request. However, as there is an issue of an unsafe building, a partial vacate order and unresponsiveness to Commissioner comments over the last two hearings, we elected to move forward on this one. Subsequently, submissions were made by the applicant on September 9th, attempting to respond to Commissioner comments at the prior hearings on November 25th and March 3rd. It is in part, it in part suggests that the owners should not be held accountable for the misdeeds of their consultants. But I have to say, it's hard for me to believe that the owners were entirely ignorant of their responsibilities to keep the building safe and code compliant in light of almost 30 ECB violations and over $50,000 in fines that were accrued in the last 10 years, understanding that they repeatedly hired substandard consultants. As to the A finding, I need to correct a statement in the submission and the record. The nonprofit institution must indeed make the unique physical conditions leading to hardship findings in order to be considered for a variance. Programmatic needs do not satisfy the A finding, but rather go to supporting the need for the scope of waiver sought, hence to the minimum variance, the E finding, and neighborhood character, the C finding. Only in the case of schools and religious institutions, and most recently and rarely for very low income housing, will the Cornell deference doctrine apply to obviate the need to establish an A finding based on the unique physical conditions of the lot. The revised statement of facts makes reference to a programmatic needs report, but I didn't find it anywhere. Someone else found it, love to know about it. Recited side yard regulations on the drawings and statement of fact are incorrect. Two side yards, each eight feet wide, are required by Section 24-35. The cited sections just miss, like completely leave out the eight-foot side yards. It just skips to the 10%, and I don't understand how that happened. The amended statement of facts incorrectly argues that the existing building condition drives the requested side yard waiver. That is an existing noncompliant condition, so it doesn't drive the side yard waiver. The illegal extension is what is at issue in this application. And the better argument for that would have been that the lot is only 22 feet wide and that two eight-foot side yards would leave an unusable development width of only six feet. The only other waiver is apparently for lot coverage. I don't know what the programmatic need is to exceed the required lot coverage. And I want to make sure that lot coverage is being properly calculated based on the definition of lot coverage in Section 1210. If additional waivers of the zoning resolution are being sought in addition to those listed on the DOB denial, and the DOB denial has parking calculations that are incorrect, so no waiver is needed from the BSA for parking. If additional waivers are needed, a formal denial from the Department of Buildings for those waivers must be provided to BSA to give us the authority to waive. Apparently, lot coverage is being sought on page 13 of a statement of facts/cover letter, so we would need that. An engineer's report and a follow-up to that report with load calculations submitted on September 9th were provided that state that the structure as built will support, quote, "gravity loads of the new use" based on building code requirements, except in the, what's described as the open study area, where deflection was found to be too high. The conclusion is, and of course Commissioner Sheta will elaborate on this, but the conclusion is that based on the loads for that use, the amount of deflection does not present a hazard. But what if the space were used for greater capacity? It is described on the statement of facts as being a study area with a maximum occupancy of seven persons. That's also on the drawings. But the configuration of the synagogue suggests that the floor will be used for the women's gallery that overlooks the sanctuary, which is a very standard design for synagogue, which means that there would be many more persons than the seven. And another thing about the design of the drawings, there's a separate door leading directly upstairs from the street and a separate toilet room at that level, which looks like a women's gallery for all the world. So what if it's used that way? What if there are more than seven persons, then it's a heavier live load? The engineer should recalculate based on chair seating capacity at that level, not just seven people at a desk. If as stated in the cover letter, the second floor is for the rabbi's study, then I'd have to say, what's the programmatic need for the separate entrance that leads directly up to the stairs and up to the mezzanine? Seems quite strange because it's not a private living situation, as we see sometimes. And at the sanctuary level, the calculations, the engineer's calculations, are based on table seating. So I ask, what about during the high holidays when I'm assuming that they take the tables out and set up chairs? So will capacity exceed 74 persons? In which event, a public assembly permit and a second means of egress is actually required? And that was a requirement of the vacate order. So there's a vacate order for that rear extension because it doesn't have two means of egress. There's a statement in the cover letter that the kitchen and cellar dining room will be eliminated, yet the submitted floor plans submitted as Exhibit 7, revision date August 14, shows the kitchen intact. And the engineer's report labels the room in which the detail section is taken, quote, "dining room." So to clear up any doubt, they should provide the refrigerated trash room as directed at the last two hearings because we don't know that it won't be used even if the drawings show it being used other than removal of an oven. There's a little dash line to indicate it's removal, but everything else is in place. I repeat for the third time that the drawings is provided are not acceptable. We need to know what areas are to be legalized and what areas are new construction. Applicant states that the Department of Building approved drawings cannot be found, but it doesn't take much to prepare a set of drawings that complies with the zoning resolution and to indicate which walls, et cetera, do not comply and hence need waivers. And also to show what new measures will be implemented to bring the building into compliance with building code in response to the vacate order and many violations, not to mention ADA access. So I hope that the architect will join on our hearing call because just having a conversation with counsel isn't fruitful. So we need the drawings to be very clear. There has to be a drawing that shows the allowable conditions and then the conditions that are not allowable but exist or essentially proposed. And then, and also the conditions that are going to be, let's say, making this code compliant. They need to show the property lines on drawings A02 and A03. A02 misleadingly implies that the ADA ramp is located entirely within the property lines when the extension is built full to the side lot line. Furthermore, although the code may allow for inaccessible spaces, this is an application for a variance, and there needs to be a good reason for not providing access to spaces at the cellar and the second floor. We require, as it's almost like a public policy position, how can you build a public building that doesn't provide access to the disabled, to the other floors? I don't understand that. The no fencing or planting is shown on the site plan as stated in the cover letter. The fence shown is on adjacent property. Planting should be shown in the rear yard or an explanation for how the yard will be used given the adjoining residential neighbors. It's not to be used for congregating, and that disturbs the neighbors. That's why we usually ask for planting in those open areas. The drawings submitted are washed out and the text nearly illegible, so please provide a proper set. The applicant may also misunderstand the meaning of as-built plans as it states it cannot provide them. As-built drawings, just to inform the applicant, as-built drawings are those prepared by the current architect of record and require that architect conduct a field survey to verify existing conditions on the site. General assurances from the owner that the plans probably are correct isn't the same as a licensed architect's signed and sealed drawings based on field inspections and measurements. The drawings provided to us include a set of what's described as existing floor plans, A08 and A09, that show a two-story-plus cellar, two-family house with 20'3" by 46'1" floor plates. So it should be easy enough to indicate which walls may have been existing noncompliant and which are new complying and noncompliant walls. The drawing is very easily done if you would just please do it. There's a note about a bathtub to remain on A03. Remove it, remove the note, there is no bathtub. We are still waiting for the survey to determine the height of the extension in the rear yard because if the rear yard extension is higher than 23 feet, it's not a permitted obstruction in the rear yard. There is a ramp being proposed for egress from the rear yard into the neighbor's side yard, shown on Z02, which is not dimensioned, and it is not clear it would comply with egress requirements. Assuming that it does comply with egress requirements, we need to see an easement from the neighbor because otherwise it's a hollow offer. General notes, page G01, are for residential building, so remove G01, G02, G08, and EN drawings from the BSA set. We don't take engineering drawings, environmental, sorry, engine, they're energy drawings that are required by DOB. We don't include those in our sets. And anyway, if it's a calculation for a residential building, it's irrelevant to us. Notes on Z01 are still incorrect. This is a proposed change in use, and whatever provisions such alteration type 1 use change triggers must be complied with in terms of building code. Eliminate references to quality housing on drawing Z03. There's just so many mistakes on these drawings. It's just, I'm very disappointed, I have to say, with this applicant who's got a lot of experience and shouldn't be submitting to us over and over and over again these really undeveloped projects and undeveloped arguments. Provide a site survey so that we can actually verify what's going on in terms of the actual as-built conditions, which then the surveyor would also be able to give us the actual height of the rear yard extension. And a statement in a statement of facts indicates that no additional construction besides the ramp is being proposed, yet the vacate order requires a second means of egress from the rear extension. I'd like to know whether that, this position is in contradiction. These two different positions are in contradiction. Also, fire department and DOB were supposed to be inspecting, and I know there was a delay on inspection due to shortage of staff and COVID. So those are my comments. Vice Chair Shonda?
Madam Chair, I agree with you. It is a little frustrating to kind of have to review the same documents and asking for the same set of information. I really have nothing further to add to this.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I echo your comments, Chair. I think that to get to this point and not have a simple analysis of the totality of the congregation that attends regularly versus on holidays, as well as a calculation of the square footage of usable space of that room and how it's used, is ridiculous because that to me is the key to whether or not they need more space or need a lot coverage waiver. You know, other than that, there's no way for us to tell. So they really need to take a look at zoning resolution and look at how it analyzes worship rooms that are divided up with tables and the square footage you allot to each table, and then figure out what could actually fit in there and what they need. I personally still maintain, from what I can see, that they do not need that extra space.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to be repeating the comments that Sid, but I'm going to like focus on one of the aspects of the project, which is the structural review that the board requested the applicant to work with the DOB to make sure that the building is structurally intact and could sustain the loads it is proposed for. Apparently, what happened is the applicant has gone to the DOB and did ask them to apparently perform the structural review. And I believe that's why DOB said, hey, we don't do that. And of course, none of the city agency should act as the consultant of any of the applicants. The way it works, if we direct an applicant to work with DOB to make sure that the building is structurally intact, is that the applicant hire a consultant, and then the consultant prepare an engineering report with analysis and then submit it to DOB to state whether the building is okay or it needs work. And then the DOB rules come here by looking at this report and saying, yes, we agree. No, we disagree. This is how it works. But anyway, I did take a look at the structural engineering report that was prepared for the buildings. And I want to say before I start that any input from our side here at the BSA is made for the benefit of the public. Our role here is not to review structural reports. But again, if we see something, we would like to say something. The structural engineering reports, one of the finding that surprised me is that the deflection of the joists or one of the main supports was exceeding the limits for the 1968 Building Code. First of all, I don't know why it's the 1968. I understand that probably the filing with DOB is under the 1968 Building Code, but if I'm the structural engineer and there is like a restriction in the 2014 Building Code, even the 2018 Building Code, that exceeds the requirements for the 1968. As a structural engineer, like willing to make sure that the kind of work I'm doing is good and intact, I would use the most stringent code to make sure that the building is good enough. But they use the 1968, and although they did that, they are like disclosing to everybody that the deflection exceeds the limits in the 1968 Code. And what is surprising to me here is their conclusion is, hey, don't worry about it. This is not a big deal. No, it is. Deflection limits are called in the structural engineering world. They call them serviceability limits. And when we design structural elements, we have two limits that we look at. One of them is called strength limit, and the other one is called serviceability limits. I'm sorry, limits, not limit. And in the strength limit, you want to make sure that whatever structural element, whether it's column, beam, anything else, is not going to collapse. It's not going to break, it's not going to be damaged. In parallel to this, you want to make sure that if you're building something, that something could service the reason it's built for. Like if you're building a hospital and the people can walk on top of the floor, but this floor is vibrating. It's not going to collapse, but it's vibrating. If I go to that hospital once and I see that it's vibrating like that, I'm not going to go there one more time. So they call this building not serviceable. It doesn't help the reason it's built for. And serviceability limits are mainly deflection, how much deflection you get in a building or in a structural element. It could be cracking. If we're designing a concrete building, a concrete beam could crack. It's not going to break, it's not going to collapse, but it's going to break, it's going to crack. And if it cracks, the wall on top of that beam, if any, is going to crack. So these serviceability limits are quite important as the strength limit. And the way that structural engineer is looking at him is, it's not a big deal. I respectfully disagree with him, and it need, that serviceability limit need to be like satisfied, same as the strength limit. Otherwise, they are useless in the building code, actually, and they should take them off, and which is not happening at least today. So this is the second thing. The third thing is apparently that building, when they intend, like were willing to change the use from house to a house of worship, they did some strengthening for the joists by sticking another joist to each of the joists existing. They call this nailer joist. And according to that engineering report, that nailing is not done in a good way. So that sister joist is not helping the existing joist. And this is clearly mentioned in that report. And I'm not sure if the capacity of the system as a whole, as a composite element, was evaluated based on the composite action or just based on the existing joist, like the new one, as if the new joist is not there, it's not done. So that would render any strengthening to the building as useless, as if it doesn't exist or it didn't exist. I didn't see this in the report, it wasn't clear. If I'm preparing a report like this, I would make this point crystal clear. So this is the second thing I quote, and it made me like surprised. But the big deal for me is the closing of the report, that it states that all the work done is actually based on nothing. Why? Because they looked at structural elements, they looked at this, they looked at that, and all the design parameters that they used in their design. Like you hire somebody to look at a concrete building or a steel structure, and he doesn't know the steel's strengths, he doesn't know the concrete's strengths, whether this concrete is 2,000 PSI or 6,000 PSI. And the guy comes, measure the dimensions, look at the drawing, does some structural analysis and run the numbers, and yeah, this beam is good. This column is good. This beam is deflecting a little bit more. But you know what? We don't know the concrete strength for that beam, for that column, for that element. But we assumed them at 3,000 PSI. And you know what? Make sure you check that before you make your final decision on the building. You already made the decision on the building. You're the professional. In your report, you said you didn't see cracks, and I don't know how you're going to see cracks in a wood structure. Cracks usually seen in either concrete buildings, so they are kind of the first alarm that the building is suffering, or in a steel structural building, a steel structure building that's coated with cement for fire protection. So when the building starts like playing and complaining, you see cracks in the finishes, you see cracks in the cladding. But for a structure like this, you're basing your decision on the fact that you didn't see any cracking. Of course, you're not going to see any cracking. And you're basing your entire decision on an assumption that lab testing or testing need to be done at the end of the day to make sure that whatever parameters you considered in the design are already existing in reality in the field. So what are these parameters? Let's say, let's say this owner is genius, and before he made the final decision, we'll make sure that he hire a testing lab, take samples of the wood and test them, and make sure that this wood is 1,000 PSI, same as you assumed. What did you assume? Why you didn't mention that in the report? So I'm really commending the structure, and I believe, I believe he's a good structural engineer. He went through the steps, one, two, three. The analysis seems to be making sense, but the facts are not there. And a kind of report like this, based on an assumption, actually, I just spoke to one of my friends in overseas yesterday, and I was like banging them hard because they are basing structural safety analysis on assumptions for buildings. But here in this country, it can be like that. I'm sorry. So please, take a look at that. Send somebody, take some samples, or send the guy who knows what kind of wood is this. Evaluate the parameters and make your report crystal clear. If something need to be done, mention that something need to be done. If you believe the building is good, I have a statement that I want to see that clearly indicate that we, structural engineer XYZ, looked at this building, performed structural analysis, and we certify that this building satisfies the requirements of the Building Code 2014 or 1968 or whatever to sustain the loads it is intended for, period, like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, I always learn. The reason that, was it, was the reason that you were questioning the nailers is because there's a statement in the report that says it's not bearing on anything?
Two things. Number one, he said that the nailing pattern appears to be inadequate. This is number one. Number two, he's saying that the nailer does not bear on the end support. There are two consequence for these two statements. If the nailer is not like well nailed to the existing joints, that mean that it is not helping the existing joint. It's useless. Because imagine that you have a piece of wood, you have two end supports, and you stand on top of that piece of wood. It's not taking your load. So what you're going to do is, you're going to put another piece of wood next to it. If you just put it like that, there is no shear connection between them. It's going to be useless, it's not going to take any part of the load. Add to this, if it's not bearing on the end support, it's going to like escalate the issue. If it's well nailed, but it's not bearing on the end support, it's going to help in what we calling bending strength. So it's going to increase the bending strength, the deflection will be less, the bending strength will be less, but it's not, it's not going to help with the shear strength because the shear is usually at the end support. But if it's not like well nailed and it's not bearing on the ends, it's not there. It's like, it's not installed. And if, again, if I'm the structural engineer, I would have told the owner of this building, you know what? The nailing is not good, it's not bearing on the end supports. It's like, it's not there. See, he should go back to the guy who did that kind of strengthening work, kind of like extra support to the building and say, you know what? You built something that's useless, giving you my money back. That's how it works.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I think that my notes are pretty much the same notes that I have for the last hearing and the one before that. And similarly, I think that's what I'm hearing from many other commissioners. I don't know what our goal, what we're seeking, what we're hoping to get today, what parameters can we give the applicant so that, you know, something will be different?
Right. Well, the threat not to grant the variance, that could be a simple one because we cannot get our questions answered. They asked for an adjournment, but we had a prior adjournments. And, you know, given the situation with COVID, I'm trying to be a little more lenient about how long it takes people to respond. But a lot of these questions don't need the appearance of, you know, outside investigation or anything. The engineer actually went on site, you know, and construction has been essentially allowed to proceed. The engineer actually went on site, you know, and, um, construction has been essentially on, allowed to proceed in the city. So it's not like COVID stopped an individual mechanic from going on to a site. So the excuses that we are hearing are really not good, um, excuses based on COVID, right? So all I can say is that we give them one more chance and then we close this and, and vote based on not having adequate information to make a decision. And so that would normally be a vote to deny. And, you know.
I, I think that's, uh, I think that that would be best. Um, we give them a, a set amount of time, uh, so that we can get a, a response. But I don't think we should leave this on our, our, uh, as an open case for another six months, you know?
Right. Okay. Chair? Commissioner Shaveta, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that the project manager reach out to the DOB since they heard about that structural issues, and probably forward a copy of the report and, and ask them to take a look at it. I'm not sure if this report was sent to DOB or not. And, and it's better that DOB gets a copy of that.
Right. So we'll send it to DOB because it's probably certain that they didn't give it to DOB, right? Um, right? So we'll, we'll give a copy, we'll ask them to give a copy. But I, I'd rather that we know that it was filed because otherwise, this will just go on indefinitely. We really don't have any signs that the applicant is cooperative. Um, you know, they submit us this stuff basically three days before the hearing and we have to review it, it's not how it's done. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Sorry, sorry, sorry. The next item is 2019, 188 B C, 1212 East Gun Hill Road, the Bronx. Okay. Um, so we have, uh, new, new drawings. Wheel stops are shown for only nine parking spaces that front onto the landscaping. Another six spaces along the other side lot line should show the same. Wheel stops are installed to protect the planting, so the drawings are missing those wheel stops. Two rows of arbor vitae are shown in deep planting beds, that's really good. Um, the trash enclosure has been modified to open away from residents. I would, we, I don't think we have a detail on the trash enclosure and we should always get details on trash enclosures and of the planting beds. So I'm going to reiterate again to all project managers, whenever we have a situation where we have planting beds and trash enclosures, the drawings should always include details of the planting beds with curves and the trash enclosures with the doors. Um, and reject the drawings if they don't have that. And a note to applicants who are listening, you should never submit drawings that don't include the details for the trash enclosures and the planting beds with curves, okay? Um, I'm recommending because, uh, you know, the theme of this week is rodents. So I'm recommending based on my reading that the trash enclosure should have a solid steel door with a door sweep. Um, up until now, we've been seeing only, and I know that rats can crawl into everything, but at the same time, they have to really wanna get there if it's hard to get in, right? So, um, so what we see most of the time is chain link fencing as a door, and that does not keep anybody out of any description, right? So since we're near residents and the concern is that the residents will then get to share the rats with the neighbor, um, to put solid steel doors that don't provide any opening for the rats to squeak through. And the door sweep is to prevent them from getting underneath the door. So the more I study it, the more I learn about rat proofing. And then we can open up a, what is it, a extermination company at the end. Um, as it, as advice to owners, um, uh, this is again from my research. To prevent rat infestation, the trash storage area has to be maintained clear of refuse with the lids tightly closed and with frequent pickups. Um, and as I mentioned yesterday in another application, the New York Botanical Gardens provides advice about proper maintenance of planting beds to prevent rodents eating on trash from entering garden beds. And we learned that some kinds of planting on the whatnot to feed your rat site is actually poisonous to rats. So encourage the planting of those kinds of things in addition to what's shown already in the planting areas. Um, they should show acoustical fencing material on the main site plan, not just on BSA 13, because the main site plan is really what we, well, everything should be consistent. So you should show the acoustical fencing on the, on all the plans. At the last hearing, the instruction for the perimeter fencing on the residential side was metal picket, not chain link fence, so it should be changed to metal picket. Um, the requested hours of operation of the drive-through are no longer 24/7, but to 12 a.m. on weekends and one a, weekdays and 1 a.m. on weekends. Um, the justification for those hours which we asked for is a bowling alley, parking lot across the street. But I would think that the justification should be other drive-throughs in the area parking lot that's active, isn't the same thing as a drive-through, which is, you know, really active and all the activity goes on in the car. Um, and we also, of course, have learned from another application that the noise sources are also from the drivers and the car speakers. So, uh, I, it seems to me that if there are no other drive-throughs in the immediately, immediate area that it goes to that late, um, that 1 a.m. or 12 a.m. might be too late. It would be for me if I lived next door. Um, also, we, they should add a sign as we're saying about all these applications. And so note to project managers, always ask for this sign on all the drive-through applications, um, directing drivers to turn off their radios and keep their voices down. So that should be indicated on the plans. So that's a kind of a new thing on the list of, um, in the notice of comments requested. And don't accept a drawing if you've got it in your notice of comments that doesn't include it. Um, this is a legalization. We normally ask that the work be done before we vote on it. But the other alternative is to close with a submission revised to pick up our comments and put it on a short leash to come back for a compliance check. So I'd like to hear what people have to say about that. I think that the applicant has been very responsive to our comments and has made the changes to the drawings as we've asked. So I expect they'll continue to do the same. Um, okay. Vice Chair Shonda?
Okay. Um, so yes, I agree with the additional signs being placed. Uh, that's kind of becoming a standard of, um, notifying anybody who is either parking in the parking lot or in the drive-through lane to, um, you know, turn their volume down completely. You know, that noise that is emanating would or may emanate from the car. Uh, with regards to the proposed, uh, reduced hours of operation from 24 hours to the hours that they're proposing, which is the existing hours of operation is 6 a.m. to 10 a.m., uh, Sunday through Thursday. And the, and the proposal is to, um, for Friday to Friday through Saturday, which is, uh, 6 a.m. to 1 a.m. I'm okay with that. Um, with regards.
I repeat the, no, I don't think it's correct. It's 6 a.m. to 12 a.m. weekdays until 1 a.m. weekends.
Oh, I have it wrong then.
That's the problem. I'm looking at it midnight on weekdays, wow, if I'm a neighbor.
Okay, then I have it wrong. Let me then, let me read it again. I, I thought that's what I saw it, okay. All right. Uh, I'll hold my comments on that. Uh, with regards to the work, um, I agree with you. The applicant has been responsive and I'm okay with giving them a short leash and doing the work.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Atlee Brown?
I have no problem with the hours of the operation that they're proposing right now, ending at midnight and ending at 1 a.m. Um, they wanna match up with the bowling alley across the street. I, I personally think that's fine, especially with the enhanced landscaping and sound barrier that are on the southern side of the site that's closest to the house that might be impacted. I think will make it a far better situation than it is already. I feel that they've been very responsive. And if we put them on, on a short leash, then we'll be able to see whether or not there's still negative impacts from the drive-through. And I think it's still, at this point in time, is actually working for those hours as well, more or less, maybe even more. And so I, I don't see that it would be a problem. I just have one question about the, um, the garbage, uh, storage unit. The doors face the drive-through line. And usually we hear applicants say that they need to have it positioned in such a way that it could be accessed by a garbage truck. And here, with the doors facing the drive-through line and the pass-through lane, it doesn't seem like there'd be any way for a truck to back up next to it. So I was just curious about that.
So what happens is dumps, because I don't think is a big, uh, you know, one of those huge dumpsters. These are those little rolling dumpsters, you roll them in and you roll them out. So you roll it out and then the truck backs up and it lifts it right there in the drive-through lane.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that was my only question. Other than that, I was fine with the application as is.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you Chair. Um, I agree that, that our operations proposed are, are reasonable. Uh, I don't think 12, uh, midnight is, is kind of like an odd. Uh, my understanding is that the, uh, sound study submitted is based on, uh, field measurements, but not at the actual site, at the manufacturer's site. And, and I understand that if, if we let this go and, and, and they come back and we see like any negative impacts, they, they could be mitigated. Uh, one, one of the, the things that I, I thought about, if you look at the plans submitted on page 13 or 14, the clouded ones, I'm thinking if they just twist the speaker, like probably 10 degrees, it would like mitigate the impact or any impact, I would say, on the residences. It would, it would pull the high, uh, DBA, uh, green zone from, from like, to away from the adjacent residents. And that could be like another guarantee when they install the system and they start operation. They, they don't have to worry too much about it. Uh, other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you.
You're, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I, I believe the application was responsive. I believe the landscaping, uh, and the, the acoustical measures that they took. I, I hope that they, uh, are going to be sufficient. And I believe that if we do give them a short leash, we should be able to, we would, we'd be able to remedy any problem before it got too serious. So I think that, uh, I, I'm satisfied with this application.
Great. Thank you. Helpful suggestions, everyone. Okay.
I don't know.
Shonda? Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just wanna go back, I had a typo. I did go back to the letter. So it does talk about Sunday through Thursday, 6 to 1 a.m. and 6 to 12 from, uh, for Friday and Saturday. I'm okay with that.
Uh, no, that's the other way around.
Yeah, yeah. 6 to 12, 6 to 12, Sunday through Thursday, and 6 to 1, Friday and Saturday.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm seeing something, saying something, okay.
Okay.
But I registered it and I'm okay with it.
Okay, good. Um, and I see, Ms. Benke's hand up, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that we received the revised EAS and it looks good. If the plans are changed again, we would just need the final plans in the final EAS.
Great. Just one second, Tony. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. In case anyone wasn't, uh, didn't hear yesterday, item 2019, 205 B Z 45, Vincent Dorn Avenue has been adjourned. So this concludes the review session. We will now commence with the public hearing for September 15, 2020, 10 a.m. session, 2019, 27 B Z 4533, 18th Avenue, Brooklyn, the firm of Klein-Slowick.
Is that Neil?
No, that's, uh, it's John Overland, and I don't know if Stuart is joining in, Stuart Corrigan. I don't know who else, so.
Oh, we have Mr. Overland just joined in. If you can hear us, please.
Good morning. This is John Overland. I'm, I, I am on. I apologize, I'm having some, we're, i- if any of you've ever served in the military, it's like being in a battalion operate, uh, Battalion Tactical Operations Center. I've got three phones going and that's where I am right now. Um, let me see, Stu, are you on?
Um, Mr. Overland, you must turn off your YouTube video. We hear you several times.
Let me get this, let me get the YouTube situation off. Let me see if I can get rid of this. Okay, how is it, how is it now?
Good. Okay. Who else is, uh? Sorry, are you, I think anyone else besides Mr. Klein?
I believe Mr. Klein's joining me and, uh, Mr. Gary, Jeff Gary, the architect.
Okay. I don't, I don't think they're here yet though, right?
Okay, I'm sorry, give me one moment. Stu, we're on the, we're on the Zoom now, we're on the BSA Zoom.
You're on the BSA Zoom.
Right.
Can you send me over the instructions on that?
Oh, um, I, I sent those.
Why, why are we on, we're on the Zoom, speaking to them?
Yes, we're supposed to be on now, they're on the, they, they're on the, they're on the hearing calendar now. Uh, the.
Okay, okay, let me get on it, hang on.
Okay, still be on, Mr. Klein be on in a moment. Um, let me see.
Kane is part of your group?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Kane is part of your team?
Yes, he is. Mr. Daniel Kane is also with the, with the congregation, congregation.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here.
No, I don't, I don't see you, I don't see, hold on.
Yes, Mr. Klein, you're, well. Here is the, Mr. Klein, unmute yourself.
You're on mute, Stu. Stu, you're on mute.
There we go, okay.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Overland, could you turn off your phone with Mr. Klein? Cause we hear him twice, okay?
It's going off now.
Okay.
Okay. I, I, our architect, John, give Gary a call, tell him we're on. Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh.
Wait, you have to slow down, Mr. Klein, okay?
Okay.
The first is, uh, Mr. Kane should unmute himself, cause we have to swear you in. And then we also have someone named Vavel Jalas, is that part of your team?
I'm sorry, what, I could not hear you?
Yes, ma'am, he's with the congregation, Mr. Velas is with the congregation.
Okay. They both, to unmute so that we can swear them in.
Okay.
Okay. Amen. Danny Kane.
Okay. And Mr. Jalas?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, please raise your right hands. Miss. Mr. Overland? Unmute, Mr. Overland.
Mr. Overland, you're muted.
Sean, get off the Zoom now.
I don't know why we're hearing so much. I don't know why we're hearing so much conversation. Mr. Overland, please get unmuted.
John Overland, I apologize. I was trying to call Jeff Gary, the architect.
Ah, okay.
All right, let me swear you in first, okay?
Wait, wait, wait.
He's there.
Tony, wait.
Joining us.
Yeah, we have Mr. Gary and Mr. Steinberg joining. So please unmute yourselves, Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Gary, because we're going to swear you in. Okay, they're unmuted. Okay.
It's Jeff Gary.
Go ahead.
Okay, everybody ready? Do you affirm? Raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do. Yes.
Okay, please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Jeff Gary, Architect?
John Overland of Klein-Slowick P L L C for the applicant.
You're applying for the applicant.
And you're Kane for the applicant.
Okay, who's speaking first?
Okay, I'm speaking first. Um, obviously, there there are some deficiencies in the plan. Uh, some deficiencies that were noted by the board were in fact on the plans, and Mr. Gary will speak to that. Uh, but I, to be candid with you, I was somewhat taken back by some of the comments. Uh, number one, I don't know where we get this idea that the ABA, the ABA is a federal law. It's public law. Uh, one oh two of nineteen ninety came into effect in June nineteen ninety-two. What we're looking at is the uh, Article eleven oh four of the Building Code, and it specifically says that with regard to the second floor and the and the cellar, that uh, that uh, handicap compliance is not required. Uh, that is the law we're applying to it.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Klein. You're applying for a variance, are you not? So the board has a policy that where it sees that there are spaces that are not duplicated elsewhere on another floor, I mean, on the entry floor, the space must be accessible to the disabled. If you don't want to comply with that, then that's, you know, then you're you're making a choice about your variance, not complying with the safeguards that are being imposed by this board on all applications.
I appreciate that, and I'm not saying I won't do it. I'm simply saying that the the uh, the use of the second floor is replicated on the ground floor. Uh, all it is is counseling and rabbi's study and teaching of the Talmud, the Torah, and the Chalacha, and all that can be done on the ground floor. So there is duplication on the ground floor. So there is no need to uh
What if you have a disabled rabbi?
If I have a disabled rabbi, he'll work on the second floor, on the first floor, and the second floor simply will not be used.
Makes no sense. Makes no sense at all.
You want it, Madam Chair, if he's blind, the chairlift won't help him, and the ABA, one percent of the total population of people
Oh, don't go there, Mr. Klein.
Hey, I used to lecture.
So let's just say, the rabbi is a really successful rabbi, and he ages in place, and everyone loves him, and they want him to keep staying there, but he can't go upstairs to his own study. Don't interrupt me. Stop that. Talking. There we go. Thank you. All right, so if you're talking and you're muted, so we're not hearing you, so I'm going to speak, and I wish you would listen. So if the rabbi is aging in place, and we want the rabbi to stay because he's popular with the congregation, you're saying that the rabbi is going to have to quit because he can't use the study, he can't teach the people who he would be teaching, et cetera. Not believable. The other thing is, and you're still talking, though, I don't know why. Um, the the other part of it is, as mentioned, the design of this building looks nothing like what you say. It has a separate entrance for women. And the design of the building indicates that that second floor is going to be used as a women's gallery, like all of the other synagogues we see, of which we see, maybe I'd hazard to say, close to hundreds. So I, so we would, don't forget, this is a variance. We're looking at programmatic need and so on. What would be the programmatic need for having a second staircase that goes directly from the outside if the rabbi is having a study there? There would be no need for it. So clearly, the need is a woman's gallery. And we should be instead hearing from not counsel, but the rabbi who manages this synagogue to understand why in the world the women's gallery is not ever going to be used as a a women's gallery, even during high holidays, and therefore needs accessibility, et cetera. Okay, so you're, again, you're speaking and you're muted, and we cannot hear you. And so I'm going to unmute you, but you cannot, you cannot um, interrupt when I speak or when anyone else speaks.
Bye, audience.
Unmute yourself.
Okay, can we hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, number one, uh, if in fact we hire a rabbi who who basically is a marathon winner and can use a second floor, uh, when he ultimately becomes disabled, we will put in a chairlift. We're talking about a synagogue that is very, very tiny in nature, doesn't have a great deal of money, and you're asking them to comply with the law that at this point in time is unnecessary and will cost thousands upon thousands of dollars. And it would also reduce the egress uh, from the second floor. Because remember, the handicap access law is an access law. It's not an egress law. So in order to put in a handicap access uh, lift, uh, if you counted from the open position, which are most, which is most UL-rated lifts, uh, you will have to make the stairwell wider, and you'll have to cut down the use of both the first and second floor. That's number one. Number two, uh, you're comparing this to other uh, synagogues, which are much, much larger in nature. And uh, I think it's it's certainly inapplicable and inappropriate to ask that. Uh, number three, uh, plans, Mr. Mr. Uh, Gary will address the plans, but apparently, and I'm somewhat taken back by this, uh, the last response I put in, which was late, and I appreciate that, I apologize for that, uh, has details as to how the ground floor is being used and why it's needed. It says in point that there were ninety members of the synagogue, including the families, that fifty attend on a regular basis, and then on the high holidays, more people attend. If you take the nineteen, the two thousand fourteen charts, and we use the two thousand fourteen charts throughout, you will find that the space without the expansion is inadequate to service the synagogue. So that's the need. Uh, there are many, many other things I can I can detail now. I won't. However, uh, I will mention a couple of things. Number one.
Just stop, stop. Commissioner Otley Brown, yes, you have a question?
Yeah, I've looked through your documents that you've handed us, and you have not done the mathematical calculations for why you need that space. And so you may be speaking about it right now, but you're not backing it up with numbers. And that's what you need to do. It's not enough to say, I have fifty members who come regularly, and we need the space. And if you look at the code, you'll see we need the space. That's not how you make an application.
Okay, I will. I will expand on that. I'll give you the disposition you want. It is in there, but I will expand on it. It's fifteen people into the number of of congregants we have on the high holidays, and it comes out the far more spaces required than we have there. But put that aside.
Wait, you're mixing up. No, 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 no. You're 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 mixing up parking, you're mixing up occupancy levels. You're interrupting me, and I'm muting you again because you don't seem to understand that you don't interrupt when people speak. All right? I'm muting you, and then I'll unmute you when when I'm done. Okay? You're mixing up parking calculations that are based on rated occupancy levels. You're missing, you're mixing up rated occupancy level. That is not what we look at when we look at a variance application and programmatic need. We look at the size of the congregation currently, the claimed need for, say, high holiday times, and we look at potential expansion of the congregation over a five-year period, and that's what we look at. And you have not given us that information. And as a result, we don't have any establishment of programmatic needs. And I said this at the last hearing and the one before. If you don't know how to make an application for a synagogue, we have dozens and dozens of really well-done applications, and you should have gotten a copy of one and used it as a model instead of wandering around like this and forcing the board to spend all of these hours and hours and needless numbers of hearings um, trying to teach you how to make an application. It's extremely frustrating, and it's really the wrong way to be going, because what you're doing is you're tiring us out and making us inclined to deny on the basis of an inadequate application. I'm going to unmute you now. I'm unmuting you. So you have to unmute yourself. You're speaking, and we cannot hear you. You have to unmute yourself.
With regard, okay, uh, A, it's my belief that the programmatic needs, as they exist now, merit the variance. Number two, uh, the Cornell and the Marymount doctrine speak nothing about a five-year projection. Uh, so I don't know where that was inserted in this in this program or the process, but I'm certainly unaware of it, and the Court of Appeals is unaware of it. Uh, but let me address other things. If you want that, I'll be more than happy to. And I can prove it under the Cornell doctrine. It's not required, but I'll do it anyway. Uh, I know Cornell. I know all the cases, and there's nothing that says that where it speaks to any of this five-year program. In fact, the Cornell case dealt with a, an onsite, a building that was already built that was being used.
Please don't recite the Cornell doctrine to us. We read it every week.
And as do I.
Counselor, I I I I really would recommend, uh, you, this case has a has a history uh, with with uh, enough, it has a it has a storied history. I'd recommend at this point, if the if 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 the Chair or the Commissioners are asking for something that's entirely doable.
All right, well, good question about that. I'm not
I think we should just move forward.
Say that one more time, Commissioner Shabatam?
If if we're asking for something that's entirely doable, something that you're agreeing to do, I think we should just move forward.
Okay. I'm, Mr. Klein, you're now muted, and you've been speaking for I don't know how long, and uh, we don't know what you're saying. Mr. Klein, you're muted and you're speaking. Can somebody please um, let Mr. Klein know that he's muted? Mr. Overland, can you contact him? Because he's going on and on, and we don't hear him.
Um, I will do so now.
Okay, I'm I'm here again, I think. Okay, number one, I will certainly accept your advice, and I will do what is required of me. I apologize for the prior submission. Uh, the Chair was correct. I did not go over it. That it was my fault. But I think we will make those changes. Uh, the programmatic needs are there. I will uh, put in, I will expedite on them, and I will get them all in order. Uh, there are one or two other things that our architect would like to address. I do know uh, the Cornell doctrine. I'm not going to argue over it. If you want it, I'll give it to you. I'm not going to, you know, fight it, because that would be foolish of me and would not be fair to my client. But with regard to the uh, the construction elements, I will have my engineer take a look at that. Uh, I think the point one deflection that he speaks of is perfectly adequate, considering that uh, approximately seven to eight people are going to use that space. Uh, as you know, in the Orthodox community, there have to be two entrances into the building. But uh, originally, we were considering using the second floor for the women. But of the approximately sixty people that attend, fifty to sixty people that attend services on a regular basis, only eight to nine of them are women. And uh, we're going to provide space in the back of the room for them. I've seen that done on uh, Twenty Second Street in Avon in the past, where there was a movable uh, pole, which uh, set up that space and sectioned it off. It's been done repeated number of times. So the second floor is going to be used as a rabbi's quarters. Uh, I I truly do not want to go to the expense and the reconfiguration of a lift in the second floor, because it's not required by law. The rabbi is perfectly capable of walking up there, and if somebody cannot get to the second floor, uh, they will simply seek counsel on the ground floor. I think it's an expense we should not have to shoulder. And if there comes a time when, in fact, the rabbi cannot make it to the second floor, then we will adjust accordingly. Uh, with regard to the Buildings Department, uh, I work with the Forensic Section, uh, Mr. Brownlee on a daily basis regarding other locations. Uh, they will not do our review uh, to determine structural integrity of the building. Uh, the Borough Commissioner, Mr. Valenchik, denied two separate requests to do that. If the board sends it over and asks them to do that, they will likely do it, but certainly they won't do it on my request. So, uh, and the Fire Department, if you take a look at the correspondence between Ms. Prager and Mr. Daly, they are simply backed up, and they have not had an opportunity to get there. Uh, so obviously, I will comply. I will lay out the programmatic needs. Uh, I will go beyond the Cornell doctrine and give you a five-year uh, projection. Uh, if that's what you want, that's fine. I will also give you the present use, which requires the additional space. And with regard to the as-built, I'll ask that you explain that to my architect, because I don't know how I'm supposed to do an as-built per building that was built in nineteen ten. Uh, I would literally, you know, have to make invasive probes into the building to determine the width of the walls, whatever, but I'll I'll leave that up to him on as to how he wants to address it. So, Mr. Gary, do you want to address some of these matters?
Mr. Gary, before you go on, I, Commissioner Sheta has his hand up, so go ahead, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. When I said send a structural report to the D U B, I didn't mean that uh, D U B do any forensics. I I it's, I believe forensics are already done by the by the engineer. That my, I just question the like adequacy of the of the work that's done, not the analysis, but the testing. My point is that the entire report is based on assumptions, and you cannot base a conclusion regarding the structural safety of a building on just an assumption. And 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 I don't want to like be misunderstood one more time. Uh, previously, when we said uh, work with the D U B to make sure that the building is structurally sound, we didn't mean that the D U B should take responsibility for doing that kind of uh, structural analysis or evaluation work. And again, when I said send the report to the D U B, I didn't mean it either. So just wanted to make this clear. Regarding the deflection thing, again, the deflection is a serviceability limit. It's in the code. It should be satisfied. It's not, it's in the code for a reason. It's not just for people to ignore it.
No, and I appreciate that, but but I'm a little confused, and and I have a world of respect for your for your engineering ability, but what I just simply don't understand is, if you don't expect the Buildings Department to review it, why am I sending it to them?
No, no, no. Yes, I I I meant send it to them to take a look at the conclusion, not to evaluate the building itself. Apparently, when I read your when I read your submission, apparently, you went to the D U B and asked them to evaluate the building. That's what I understood from your submission. And they said, no, 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 we don't do that. And I don't want you to repeat what you did before. That's why.
If I could jump in.
Go ahead, John.
If I could jump in, uh, during the March um, executive session, there was a request that the application be referred to both the Fire Department and the D O B for a structural safety examination. And I personally spoke with Commissioner Villancic, and he said point-blank to me that that D O B does not do that. Um, I've been I've been coordinating with Deputy Chief Daly, and apparently, you know, despite his best best efforts, he wasn't able to do so. We can go, I will go back over the tapes tonight.
Sorry, sorry. Mr. Mr. Overland, I'm I'm so confused about this application and this team. No one's listening to us, and no one seems to have this, the level of professional ex- experience that we would assume. So we So we all know, being professional architects, engineers, that Department of Buildings does not do your, uh, engineering studies for you. And then you hire an engineer and the engineer does the calculations and the studies. And then you submit it to the D O B and the D O B reviews the calculations to make sure it complies with code. That's just what's done. And so the idea that you ask D O B to come in and do an engineering report is very weird. What we ask that is sometimes, excuse me, Mr. Overland, don't follow Mr. Klein's suit and interrupt. So what we did ask was that fire department and D O B inspect the building because we were concerned the building isn't safe. And indeed, we learned the building isn't safe from the fact that there's a partial vacate order. But we were also interested in what other things D O B might observe about the lack of safety. Not that they would do probes, not that they would do a calculation on what they're finding, et cetera. But a standard Department of Buildings and Fire Department inspection, it's not the same thing. And so, and when your engineer, a licensed engineer submits drawings to the Department of Buildings, the calculations are checked by the, the buildings department's own engineer to make sure they're consistent with code calculations. And, um, Commissioner Sheta just told you that your own engineer came to the conclusion, and I'm not an engineer, but I could read that report, came to the conclusion that deflection exceeded what's considered acceptable and I assuming by code standards. So hit me and then concluded, it's okay. Would the buildings department conclude it's okay? Would the buildings department conclude that a, a occupancy of only seven people on that floor is enough to base the live loads on? I don't know. And that's what you're being asked. Okay? So we don't have to go on that any further.
Without, without going into details, that report that we got has three major issues. Is if I'm the D U B engineer and I look at this report, I would say this. Number one, you said there is an issue with deflection. You cannot ignore that. Number two, you said the nailers, the additional joists are not well-connected to the existing ones. They are not helping. It's like they are not existing as if the structural retrofit work that's done for the building, if any, is not there. This is the second major issue. So you're, you're, you're basing your claim that this building is gonna be capable of handling the new house worship loads based on some structural alternations you've done, you've done? This structural alteration is kind of useless. Here you report, not pour, here, here, what I'm seeing.
I understand.
And the second, and the third, third point is in your conclusion, you based that conclusion that the building is good based in the fact that there is no cracking. You know what? It's not gonna be any cracking because the wood doesn't crack. It, wood structures do not crack.
Okay, let, let me just suggest this. If I have to system the joist, if I have to put up a header beam, I will do that. That's no problem whatsoever and that'll resolve that issue. With regard to the cracking, wood checks all the time. You can see cracks in wood. I mean, checking is one of the major reasons why you.
Klein, are you an engineer? Please don't, please don't talk to engineer.
Mr. Sheta, Commissioner Sheta will confirm this. I mean, that's why you put up sister beams because you see checks or cracks in, 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 in Joyce all the time. But, but notwithstanding that, we will, I will instruct our contractor to put up whatever he'll sister the Joyce or put up a header beam and tie all the components in and I'll eliminate that. But I'll tell you right now, and I really know the buildings department well. Uh, they will not do these calculations unless you ask them to do it. They will not. They do not.
I'm not gonna ask them, and I, I'm not gonna ask them to do it because I don't believe it's their job to do it. Your engineer should do it. He should do it, right? And you should submit it to them in such a way that makes them satisfied about it.
Okay, but.
But we're done with this conversation. Let's move on. Mr. Overland, anything else you wanted to add?
Nothing further.
Do you know what an as-built set of drawings is?
I know what it should be, yes.
Oh, actually, it's missed. I'm not asking Mr. Klein, Mr. Gary. Can we go on to Mr. Gary about the as-built drawings?
Good morning, Chair. I was able to, um, review, I was, I was in with the review session, uh, earlier this morning in the, uh, 10 o'clock hour. And I was able to take some notes that I'd like to respond to as discussed. If you're asking specifically about the, um, existing conditions, we can provide what I thought would make sense from what I heard. A block diagram of what was existing versus what was, um, what is, what was existing volumes versus what are proposed and what we are, uh, suggesting to be legalized. I think we could provide that easily.
No, no, not a block diagram. I'm looking for one drawing, like a set of drawings. And the drawings have the following sort of code on it, right? Existing building, we have existing building drawings that were included in your set, right? The existing building was, I don't know, 48 feet long, something like that. You, you indicate that it's an existing building by just say, for instance, picking, um, clear walls for existing. So no hatching, no blacking, right? And then you indicate the extension that is, is obstructing required side yards by hatching the walls of the extension. So as far as I can tell, everything about that extension is illegal because it's obstructing the two required side yards. And may, and well, on the rear yard sort of by definition because the side yards are being obstructed. So you would hatch in the walls. Those are new, considered new walls to be legalized, right? Or walls to be legalized. And you do that on both floors if that's the case. Okay? And then the next part of, understood about that?
Sure, yes.
Okay. You indicate on that drawing where the required side yards are. This required side yards, which are incorrectly described in both the drawings and in the statement of facts, is not 10% of the frontage. It's eight feet on either side. You have. Okay, so you indicate on the drawings where the required side yards are. You, you measure eight feet each side. You make a line and you put a note saying line of required side yard. And if the drawing isn't too complicated, you can do wide hatching to indicate that those are the areas of non-compliance. Okay? Because we want to be able to still read the drawing. Then the next part of it is the Department of Buildings issued a partial vacate because there's inadequate egress. So you're going to have to be doing something to provide the required means of egress. So the quest, so that will be shown as new construction, brand new, not construction to be legalized, but brand new construction. So let's just say you use another code for that. You'll use the solid black lines. I'm not telling you which code. You can pick whichever one you want. So say solid black lines are new walls to be built to make the building, um, code and, and otherwise compliant. Okay? Um, and you need to indicate where that, what that ramp is that's leading from the back and going around the building. Um, what is it? What are the dimensions? Where is the property line relative to that ramp? Because the ramp is depending on someone else's property to exist. And then Mr. Klein and Mr. Overland, you have to provide us with an easement from the neighbor which allows your ramp to go onto someone else's property to get out. And you also have to indicate that the width of that ramp on someone else's property is a legitimate route of egress. As far as I can tell, it's too narrow. So I don't know because it's not dimensioned, but you need, it needs to be a legitimate egress route. Otherwise, you have to figure out another way to get out of the building. Oftentimes you go downstairs, you go into the cellar and there's a fire, um, what do you call it? A fire corridor that goes out to the front. You may end up having to do that. That may actually be a cheaper solution. Um, because we don't know about the situation where the neighbors are. Okay? I, I'm not gonna have a conversation about this. There's lots of ways to do fire egress, but, um, so, Mr. Gary, understood so far? You have other questions?
Uh, the, the question I have is, it is. Uh, the, the question I have is, it's my understanding our plan would comply with the building code requirements. Are there additional requirements that the board is requesting such as earlier on with regard to ADA or future use that I should be looking at that is not congruent to the code?
Yeah, so it's the board's position that spaces that are, um, not replicate duplicated elsewhere must have like a Lula lift. So for instance, the cellar, which is shown as having a kitchen and having a dining room on the drawings that you submitted, it's shown as having a kitchen and a dining room.
Are you talking about fire submission drawings or the current submission drawing?
The current submission drawings show a kitchen and a dining room. And the engineer's own section through the floor showed that he was taking a section through the dining room. So either. Yeah, go ahead.
On the current submission, A double oh one, we have noted that the cooking equipment, which is typically establishes if something is a kitchen or not, has been removed. Um, and that area just becomes. I, I'm looking at my drawings.
I, I know, but I'm looking at the drawings too and either you hand erased it or the layer was still there. But it shows all the cooking equipment in place. There's only a dash, dash stove, but that doesn't mean.
No, remove existing gas, capital as required. That's not sufficient. There's a note.
We didn't, we didn't get drawings that say that. I, I can't speak for the drawing you have. I can only speak for the drawings we have.
Also, the way Zoom is, you can't tell. Um, we are, we are indicating that the kitchen, the cooking equipment is to be removed. So in the, in the, in this, in the executive session, I was confused because I wasn't seeing what you're seeing, which is fair if you're seeing something different. So we're gonna propose that the cooking equipment is to be removed and that area just becomes a storage area for, you know, whatever is going to be stored at that time. Yes, we're gonna maintain refrigerators for anybody that's juice or milk, but there will be no cooking equipment in that area. Is that sufficient for the board?
If you go down to the section drawing, you'll see it says existing kitchen. So that's, that I believe is what you're referring to, Chair.
Okay.
No, I'm also looking at the floor plan that has like both storage and kitchen equipment in, in the same space.
Right, it says storage room, but it's kind of like really dolled out. And then it shows the dotted area around the oven, which I guess is you removing the oven. So it's kind of incompletely changed over.
Right, yeah. And Vice Chair Shonda has her hand up also, so let's have her.
I actually have, uh, several comments on the drawings while the architect is here in terms of inconsistencies in it. Since we want to move this project along, I want to make sure those are addressed. With regards to the kitchen, you know, if you're planning to remove the oven, you can just put a note saying oven to be removed.
Hang on. Did you say I can or I cannot? I missed that word. I can say, I, I could simply say, I can simply say we're moving the oven or I cannot simply say, I didn't hear that word.
You, you know, you have it dotted and because the drawings are not coming out clearly for additional assurance to the board and to make it amply clear for everybody who is reviewing the drawings, put a note saying no cooking equipment would be located in the kitchen. So.
We have existing cooking, existing gas range and remove existing gas range and capital as required is not sufficient for clarify that further. I just wanna be clear because I don't wanna give you something next time and have the same conversation.
So, so that's the thing is we, we don't see what you're seeing. You need to eliminate everything that looks like kitchen in there and say this is kitchen to be, all kitchen equipment to be removed. No kitchen will be provided in cellar. No dining shall occur in cellar.
That's fine.
Okay.
Um, can I continue with the inconsistencies in the drawings since we have the architect here? Okay, so, um, first of all, um, the, the site plan, I, and I'm looking at the site plan that has been submitted, uh, on 9/9/2020 and the date on the drawings are 2/14/18. Uh, so Z.
Is it a revision date? Are you looking at drawings that have a revision date just above it?
Uh. Yes, it has a, sorry, it has a revision date of 8/14/20.
Go ahead.
It has a revision date of 8/14/20. Thank you. Um, the sheet number Z004.
Yes, I have it in front of me.
It has a site plan which does not correspond with the site plan shown on Z002, especially with regards to the rear, um, lot line condition, the rear, rear yard condition. Uh, with regards to A001, the cellar, um, it shows there is an existing window well. Now, when I go to A002, there is a ramp that is going to, uh, this is the ADA ramp that is going to exit from the rear, which will be going right over the window well. So I'm not sure what is the purpose of this existing window well. And, um, so maybe that needs to be corrected, removed, um, something to that effect. Do you see what I'm saying?
In, um, the, I see what you're saying. So on A double oh one, there's an existing window well.
Right, so when you go to A.
On the site plan and on A double oh two, we're putting a ramp, we're putting a landing and a ramp over the window well.
Right.
I don't believe that the window well would be required to, um, be removed under this application. Are you suggesting that we remove the window well? I don't see a need to do that.
I just don't know what the purpose of the window well is in that case.
At, at this current moment, there's an existing window well. We're not, we're not proposing to do anything. It's not a, it's not, light and vent is not required in that space the same way it would be like for a habitable room. So we're not proposing to do anything with it.
Okay, now going back to Z, um, Z00. Z001, oh, Z002, I'm sorry.
Page three of the set. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, um, there is an AC unit that is shown right along the rear lot line.
Okay, yes.
Um, and this is something we had brought up at another, um, uh, with regards to another case where also the applicant was proposing to provide, um, some of the HVAC systems and AC units along the rear lot line, which would be abutting a residential. So it, and it has to do with, A, the appearance of the lot line, abutting the residential, uh, use and also the noise generating from the AC unit. So either move the, uh, AC unit away from the lot line. So that.
Um, I will confirm with the, uh, with the zoning resolution regarding permitted obstructions in rear yards. Uh, I believe AC, but I'll check that.
I, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the zoning resolutions permitted obstruction. I, you are, I think it is more of, um, you, as, as Madam Chair pointed out, this is a variance, right?
That's what I was asking for. Is it a board thing you're requesting to issue variance?
Yes, it's a board policy. We, it's a board policy.
And I can't, that's all.
Right, it is a board policy. We always want to make sure that whatever is being proposed and the variance, it's going to create minimal amount of encumbrance and, and not, uh, and be, um, to, to its surroundings. So if the, right, so the visual appearance, the sound, all of these things, we want to minimize as much as possible.
Just confirm it was a board thing.
Sure, I appreciate that.
That's all.
And the other question is, um, so the first floor is raised. So the idea would be if any person, uh, re, needing access from the first floor will always have to use this ramp along the, uh, that will be wrapping around.
Any person, any, it is proposed that any person with a mobility issue would be, the only access would be through that ramp provided, uh, towards the, at the side of the building for the easement and then into the building through the rear. That was the proposal. It is our, or it is my belief that this is, uh, approvable at the Department of Buildings. However, as discussed before, there's something as a variance from the board to issue that we should accommodate or look at further.
Well, I, um, I think we have seen a few cases, uh, not that many, but one, one case I remember where I think. Uh, if, and it was not with regards to a congregation, I don't remember that, but. Easement has to be provided for that ramp access, so that is a must.
It is my understanding that the, the whole position, the other building is actually jogging. Is, is part of the easement that is being created for egress. So the building, the building that will be built. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying, and easement is, as far as I'm concerned, is being provided. And recorded at some point between now and approval.
So we need to see the easement, copy of the easement right now. Because otherwise, this is a futile discussion. If the neighbor is not giving you approval, then this is silly. Um, the other thing is, you, we need a survey. Because your representation that you have three feet between the two buildings um doesn't give us, uh, let's say. Comfort. Um, so we need survey that got, let me, please don't interrupt. You need to give us a survey that shows that you've got the minimum required width, but then, then three feet is three feet. Clear, like clear, then you're building a ramp, the ramp has railings and has curbs to it and so on. Um, or however, it may not be adequate to either for fire egress or for ADA egress. Um, access. So, you know, three feet is extremely tight when your requirement is that the wheelchair have three feet. Uh, there's no room for railing, there's no, there's no, and by the way, when you have egress, when it's a fire egress, it must be three feet clear. Right, or maybe even forty two inches clear.
Chair, our easement, we had planned our easement to do forty four inches clear. What we need to do is, uh. It's, it may create uh some other problems for the next door neighbor. So we uh went to then Commissioner Ira Bluckman. A while back and he approved the, the configuration and the clearance. So our easement's going to. Conform to Ira's approval.
Sure, well, we don't know it, we haven't seen it, we don't know what you're talking about, right? So you need to provide us with DOB sign off on the proposal and if uh forty. The drawings show three feet, so that, so until I see a survey, I don't know what you have. Goes from three feet for to forty two, there's two buildings there, you can't make it whatever size you want, right?
Actually, we did. We had, because we, he's, we're going to, we're going to be taking some, some land from his side. And going to be uh putting it on our side either by easement or by lot division or whatever, but it's.
Are you going to tear down his building if his building is in your way?
Building isn't there.
Currently built.
It's a vacant lot.
A building's not built, so why are you showing a building built? Your drawing shows edge of building.
That's the, that's the proposed future building that will, we're grabbing that spot.
Well, why don't, why don't you clarify on your drawings, what in the world we're looking at?
I'm a little uncomfortable, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of applicant. Uh, for the subject side, providing a proposed footprint for a site that they do not have ownership of. I will be okay with the applicant showing a lot um with this abutting lot and showing the area of easement. But what the future developer does. Of that lot, I, I don't think we want to see that. And I don't think it should be included in our drawings either.
We'll remove it. We'll remove it.
I thought it's an existing building. There was no way to know that.
Except if we, if we transfer that land to us, it will change the zoning lot and reduces FAR. He's not willing to do that.
I, I don't want to get into this subject. We're just looking at drawings that are not representative of the existing conditions. We don't want to see drawings that are having you make up the entire block, right?
But I'm only thinking the issue of, I, I can't, it's going to have to be, if it's done at all, it has to be by easement. Because if we transfer that strip to us, it reduces his FAR.
We, we didn't talk about a tran, we just want an easement.
I thought I heard that.
No, you didn't hear it. It, we just want an easement, all right? But we want the drawings to represent existing conditions and I want a survey. All right, and the, since you're talking about an easement, the survey should include at least say fifty percent of the adjoining property. So that we know how much space there is. To be working with, in fact, entirety of the neighboring property, otherwise we don't know what's going on. Um, that's part of the problem is the drawings don't show us what's happening. So, okay, um. Uh, Vice Chair Shonda, did you have more? Correction comments? No, okay. So, and I had a lot of comments, which I'm not going to repeat at the review session. Mr. Gary, go ahead.
Okay, so that I, I was again at the review session or able to review the review session. You had noted, um, I had noticed in the prior review sessions that we need a refrigerated um, uh, refuge. Uh, we have provided for that on um the sellout plan. Uh, just uh, all, all the way, if, if, if. Vice Chair Shonda has the plans available, uh, they are on.
What?
Uh, page eight double O one of the set, page eleven of the set. Uh, we have a refrigerated waste storage area. Um, you had asked for that prior, and if you need more than that noted. Um, just let me know and we'll provide that, otherwise.
All right, where is it?
Okay, uh, if you have the plans, uh, page eleven of the set is the cellar level.
Yes.
Towards the front of the building, uh, next to the, uh, next to the bathroom area. Refrigerated waste storage.
Okay, um, now that you say so, I. I can see it, but I do not know where that is leading to. So the lines are really weak. So I see the refrigerator, refrigerated waste storage written on the left hand side. Um, but I do not see where the line is leading to. So um, I think this goes back to our general comment that. You may have all the correct information, but somehow that it's not translating in a readable document for us to review it correctly.
It's all by email. Um, I, I can only note on, on my side, it's clear. So I don't know if there's a translation, I'll, I'll do my best to bold and darken the line weight. So it's easier to read. And um, I, maybe I'll email it to myself so I can see how it translates when it's, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know, I can't respond to that.
Are you turning your CAD document into a PDF directly from CAD?
That's typically how we do it. We have a program that converts, we use Bluebeam Review. Um, and we PDF the pages, that's the same system actually that Department of Buildings uses and um. We uh, that's, that's how, that's the program that we use.
Because ours is very washed out, we only.
You said that earlier, so I was confused, but I wasn't going to break, uh, we'll, we'll just, again, I will, I will change the line rates to really hop them out per se. And hopefully that clarifies the concern that some of the text is um washed out.
I would request another note being added to the cellar plan, uh specifically uh where the. Um, you know, where it says, I think it says accessory study area. Um, make it very clear that um, uh, a general note in the cellar plan uh stating that no um dining would be. Um, you know. Would be provided.
We already said that.
That's what I'm saying.
We already said that, okay.
When I, so I'll go back to that second, I have a timestamp over here to relook at that. Um, uh, you had, you, you were uh ma- uh Chair Premier, you had, were very um. Adamant about street trees in the uh prior sessions. Um, uh, executive review sessions, we were, we're going to provide a tree be planted in that existing tree pit. Um, on the, on the site plan, we have that noted. So if, if there was a concern moving forward on that, you know, rest assured that's.
No, you're thinking street trees, I'm, we, you were supposed to be showing fencing on the site. On this property. And I was asking about planting on the property. Now I see most of it is filled up with a ramp, but normally.
The, so again, I can also, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
So the rear yard is adjacent to residential property. You're, so the idea is that the rear yard should be handled in a way that doesn't look like a commercial property, so it should have landscaping in it. And it needs to have a residential quality fence that separates you from the neighbor. And you can't be relying on somebody else's fence, which is not as far away from your own property line. I don't even get how you're putting an air conditioner. On somebody else's property, so you have to obviously move that to your property. But that there should be landscaping there, that's what I was commenting on. You're, you're treating this too much like it's a institutional building. But it's smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood and in fact, it's a house, right?
I don't disagree, uh, Chair. I was under the assumption, we were just looking at the zoning for this item. I did not realize there was a. BSA condition for rear yard planting. Um, but I will look at that further.
Okay. And also fencing. It's very important that there.
Develop the rear yard uh, uh, as per BSA request.
Okay, but also the side yard, the side yard that doesn't have the ramp in it. Or actually, the side yard along the, somehow or other, you need to delineate between the ramp. Assuming you get to do this with the neighbor and the, and then returning to your own property. Having the fence, you have to delineate your property line, otherwise the congregation, we've had this problem many times where the congregation. Spills onto someone else's property because there's no delineating fence. And um in terms of uh Department of Buildings approval of your, this ramp situation, we need to see that Z R D one. Or, or C D one, C C D one. Whichever. We did it.
But that, that. Madam Chair, that's going to add another thousand dollars to the post.
Mr. Klein, if you're, you're making a representation that Department of Buildings signed off on this ramp. If you don't have it in writing, as far as we're concerned, it didn't happen. You need it in writing. And the standard A is a C C D one or a Z R D one. If you get it in letter form, if you get it in something else, it needs to be attached to a drawing. That indicates that the commissioner reviewed it and signed off on it. Otherwise, didn't happen.
I, it didn't happen and what would happen is we wouldn't get the plans approved and we'd be stuck in the mud. I mean.
No, no, it, no, sorry, sorry, Mr. Klein, we don't approve things that we don't, that we question. Um, and without DOB sign off. If you don't want to get DOB sign off, here we are again. Not able to move forward with this application and you just heard from us. Our frustration about the poor prosecution of this application and our willingness to only have one more try and then we're done.
Okay, so we, you want a C D one, I'll put in the C D one. With, but once again, we're talking about a very, very small location and a really.
Mr. Klein, this is a variance application and either you comply with the board's instructions. Or you go away and you figure out how to relocate the congregation to somewhere where they have a complying building.
Okay, um, just one more question I have, and that is, uh. In that eleven oh four, eleven oh four point one of the building code does not require us to have. Um, uh, handicapped access to the second and the cellar floor. Uh, it's going to be a great deal, uh, of course involved to do that and reconfiguring.
I don't want to go on and on about this. Um, I would like to actually finish with the architect. Um, finish with the architect and then I'd like to speak to someone from the congregation, is one of the people who are attending the here, the meeting. Velvel Malas, Isaac Sternberg, Daniel Kane, one of those, the rabbi in charge of the congregation.
Yeah, well, they're board members.
So the one who has the most authority to speak on behalf of the congregation, I'd like to hear from them, but. I want to just make sure that Mr. Gary is finished with his questions.
Um, again, looking at the uh prior session, you had asked us to remove some of the stray notes that wouldn't be considered part of the BSA application. We'll take care of that prior to the next submission. Um, their standard, you have what would be a standard via uh, DOB set, we'll pull off. It'd be um not applicable for BSA submission. Um. Yeah.
Should read your notes, many of them are related to a residential building.
I saw that, yes, so we'll, I mean, the kind of standard notes that, or general notes, we'll remove that. Um, with regard to the plans, you had noted, again, I don't know if it was um, a, a, a line weight thing that we didn't note. That this is an existing residential building and it is proposed to be an A three. Um, occupancy, that's on the top of uh page Z double O, uh, let me just make sure I'm giving you the right page. Um, Z double O one, top left corner, we do note that. Um, again, I, I, I see it clearly on my side, we'll try and darken that text. So uh occupants, under the zoning data, top left corner, occupancy existing res, which would be a nineteen thirty eight code res. And we'd be following the twenty fourteen occupancy requir- uh occupancy as per DOB. You know, twenty fourteen code says if we're changing occupancy, we would file. The current occupancy code class, which would be A three.
Okay, I saw. I saw also though. Somewhere else, I, I think I said in my notes that um. You have it, for instance, you have a reference to quality housing on drawing Z O three, take that off.
Move that.
Um, right, I have Z O O one, um, there is a. There's a statement that says the proposed change in, that there is no proposed change in use, so I'm going to look at Z O O one. And see. Uh. Where I got that, because you know, I'm just reading what it says. Um. Yeah, street tree Z R twenty six dash forty one, the application represents no change to existing use and no enlargement is proposed. Of course it is, the whole thing is about enlargement and then change in use.
Hold on, I just want to be clear, you're on page Z double O one in the center column, street tree, Z R twenty six forty one?
Yes.
Okay, so I specifically revised that note. So again, I'm not sure that you're seeing, but we'll make sure that the only set you are looking at at the next submission. Because my note proposes one tree and, and we, again, we revised that note, so I can't tell what you're seeing on your screen.
I'm looking at BSA revision date eight, eight fourteen twenty. That was submitted to us on nine nine twenty.
Okay. I, I won't argue, I'm just saying, I, I see it differently on my screen and I apologize for the confusion.
I don't have.
What's that?
I, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, I, I don't know who submits the drawings, nobody, nobody's checking. I, I don't know what to say, it's a terribly coordinated set of documents, not just yours, but also the others. Uh, incredibly frustrating for the commissioners have to, to have to read. For lack of a better word, garbage like this. So please, no more garbage submissions. Um, do this professionally like it matters. Do it as if your client actually matters and that they shouldn't be paying for all this additional hearings and I hope they're hearing this. That the cost to them is because at the moment, their consultants are not doing a good job. Frankly, okay? So um I would like to move on to, any other questions, Mr. Gary?
No, this time.
Okay.
Can I have one?
Right. No, Mr. Klein, we're going to go now to one of the uh representatives of the synagogue and I just have a couple of questions for them. Um, or one of them, could so, someone identify themselves who is on the board who can speak on behalf of the synagogue?
Isaac Steinberg.
Hi, um, what's your role, please?
I'm a member of the board.
Okay, um, are you somebody who's responsible for what goes on in the synagogue?
Somewhat.
Somewhat, who's more responsible?
Well, as a member of the board, we're all responsible together to. Do the right thing.
Okay, all right, so answer this question of mine. What goes on on that second floor?
That, as we said, is a rabbi's study and counseling. For couples who need counseling and the rabbi's study.
And?
That's what it is.
Okay, and what about during the high holidays?
So during the high holidays, we don't have many women who come in general as they have young children, they can come to hear the shofar. Which takes about five minutes. Which is blown special for them. And then they leave, most of them. We don't have. We don't have, like many congregations, we're not such a large congregation and have that many people who come. And because we do have young children, many of us, we don't stay there to pray.
You don't stay in the synagogue to pray?
The women, the women do not stay.
So where, how many women come for the high holidays? And the children, who hear the shofar?
I mean, I'm not, I don't watch how many come, but they can come thirty, forty, but it's blown like they come. They don't have to go upstairs. Our, the person who blows, goes out like to the hallway, blows it, and then he comes back in. It's not a, we blow it at one time. It takes about five minutes.
Where do the women stand when they are, or the children stand when they come to hear the shofar being blown?
On the first floor, right where you come in, between the hallway and the opening to the synagogue. Where the double doors open, and then they leave.
Yeah, Commissioner Otley Brown?
So if the women don't stay, they come, they see the blowing of the shofar and they leave, then what is the programmatic needs discussion talking about families that also attend and need space in the synagogue along with the forty-five members? There's a disconnect there.
Well, we do have some, we do have some who stay, as I think in the application, it says that some of the women do come and stay. Mostly the ones who will not have younger children, who will stay there for the prayers. They come during the year, and they come during the high holidays. Let's say about ten, fifteen of them who come and stay. But most of them do not.
Where do they go when they come?
They go back home.
No, no, when they come to the synagogue, where do the women go? The fifteen?
They come in from their door, from the separate entrance, and there's a door coming into the hallway, and which comes into the, to the main synagogue and the double doors. And then there's a pole with such a curtain put up to separate them from the men.
So, Mr. Gary, I don't see the pole. Could you please show the pole and the location of the curtain?
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying you actually stated, and I just want you to know that you were sworn in as a fact witness, so when you, when you speak, you must be telling the truth. You stated that when the women come in and the children come in to hear the blowing of the shofar, they stand in the lobby. The lobby looks like it's about eight feet wide and twelve feet long. And you stated that forty people plus the kids, forty women plus the kids come in to listen to the shofar in an eight by twelve space.
I stated, I'm sorry, I stated between the lobby and the synagogue till the pole, till where the pole is located.
So they actually come into the synagogue? And how many men do you have during the high holidays in the main synagogue?
I would say about fifty-five.
Fifty-five, and where do they sit since you don't have tables for fifty-five people in the main synagogue? Do the tables get taken out?
The tables are not taken out.
They're not taken out? So, Mr. Gary, how many, how many seats are there between the location of the pole and the rear of the building? How many seats on those tables?
Typically, they're, from what it looks like, I have not been there during a service, but it looks like four per table.
How many? Sorry?
Between four and six per table, let's say, would fit.
Per side.
You have a double, you have tables with benches on each side on your drawing?
Correct.
So you're saying four people on, per table?
Between four and six would fit at a table, typically.
So that's between thirty-six and fifty-four spaces. Because it looks like there are four, seven, nine tables.
But, but I don't know where the curtain goes. Is the curtain, yeah, where is the curtain? I don't know where the pole is, where the curtain is.
It's not indicated on the plan.
Right, but so where is it? Next to what?
I cannot answer that question.
Mr. Steinberg, can you answer where the pole is on the drawing?
It's about two or three tables in.
Two or three tables in, okay. So two or three tables in is basically that dash line that we see that lines up with the mezzanine above? Does that make sense, Mr. Gary?
It does.
Okay, then, so then you have five tables, three long ones and two short ones in, or maybe there's another, I can't really see because the drawings are really hard to read. It doesn't look like in front of the ark, there's a table, maybe I'm wrong. But so if you have three big tables and two small tables, we don't know what the occupancy is on these tables. And so I'm trying to understand for the high holidays, if you have fifty, so about fifty men, and then you have women coming in for a shofar?
Well, no, if you take a look at the text of the thing I submitted, it said fifty regular members and more on the high holidays.
What's more mean? We want to know how many more is.
I believe, when I spoke to him, we were talking about between a total of ninety and a hundred people.
Ninety and a hundred men, or ninety and a hundred men and women?
Ninety and a hundred men and women.
Does that sound correct, Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Okay, so we need, so as you heard from Commissioner Otley Brown earlier during the review session, unless we have a clear indication of the need for a space, then you haven't made your programmatic need requirement for that much space, okay? Well, so, so we're pretty confused now, listening to these various reports and the tables that don't show enough spaces to accommodate ninety people on the high holidays, and somehow or other fifty women and children coming in to listen to the shofar, and so on. You need to organize thoughts, and don't interrupt me again. You need to organize your thoughts and get it, and sit down with your client and your architect. Mr. Gary, you need to be part of this organizing of thoughts, and you need to clarify all of this and get it right, and submit that discussion to us in a way that's intelligible. And I would ask Mr. Steinberg and the other board members, don't sit back and just watch your consultants submitting whatever they submit. Please carefully review what they submit, because I fear they may not be representing what you know about your own congregation. And also, you may pick up errors that they're not picking up, and that would make the board very angry if we see more errors. So you, as clients, have a responsibility to yourselves to ensure that your consultants do the right, do the right job, okay? So I think we're, we're done, and I would like to then open this up to the public.
Okay, can I ask one question? I mean, it's really rather important.
Let me just see if the public, if we have people in the public want to speak. And you need to make what you have to say very brief, because we spent far too long on this application, and this is what happens to us with badly organized, or let's say, disorganized applications. They take too long.
Application is 2019-27BZ, 4533, Eighteenth Avenue, Brooklyn.
So please call in if you would like to speak on this one. What's your question, Mr. Klein? You have thirty seconds to ask it.
Since it's not required by law, and it's gonna cost tens of thousands of dollars, I'd like to know if you're going to require us to put in a handicapped access to the second floor and/or the cellar?
So if the second floor turns out to be something that is being used by, see, this is the part I really don't get. A disabled person is not able then to participate in the rabbi's study sessions?
Study session is there.
Then you're gonna have, then I would, Mr. Klein, I'm repeating you again because you just won't stop. So I'm just gonna finish it. This is something that the board members should respond to. How are they handling the absence of the ability of a disabled rabbi and a disabled congregant to access the second floor? And don't forget that congregants age in place. So let's just talk about an elderly congregation who cannot climb stairs. And so how are they going to deal with that? And the idea of their rabbi not being able to climb stairs, what is gonna go on there? And I don't want to have any more discussion about it. We've already discussed this, all right? So I'd like to ask Mr. Gary, where is he, to tell us how much time he needs in order to make a submission? Mr. Gary? I don't know what happened to him. We lost Mr. Gary? Did Mr. Gary jump off? All right, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Overland to respond to how much time you need to make a submission and coordinate with Mr. Gary. But I do want to say that, that you need to do this right. We are not going to look at another submission that's a mess, and we will in fact reject it. Our project manager here now, under instructions to reject your submission if it's a mess. All right, so we're, I'm gonna give you a minimum of two months to do a good job. Is that enough?
Well, once again, it depends on, it's out of our control. Two months, I believe, should be fine, but it's out of our control with regard to the CD1, and...
All right, so I'll give you longer, I'll give you longer because I don't want to see this again. Either you've done it or you haven't done it, right? And it's not just the CD1, we need to see a copy of the easement. And we need to, a signed easement, not a draft that to be signed, a signed easement. Because if your neighbor isn't willing to enter into it, then it's just so much talk. Okay, we don't need to discuss it anymore. So that's it, we're done with the hearing, we're moving on. Thank you very much, everyone, for calling in. If you have questions, Mr. Klein, if you have questions, you can call your project manager and ask the questions. But we spent far too long on this hearing. I don't want to see another application submission like we just saw. None of the commissioners will tolerate it. Mr. Overland, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm. Submission date and appearance date, that's, we'll take it.
We're going to figure it out, but I'm gonna be giving you three months to submit, and we'll let you know what the, what the continued hearing date is, because we don't do that at the hearings, okay? Thank you very much, everyone, for calling in. Okay, thank you.
Next item is 2019-188BZ, 1212 East Gun Hill Road, The Bronx.
I actually wanted to take a break. It's been two hours. Can we just do that? Ten-minute break for the commissioner. We've been at this for two hours, all right? Come back at 12:15. Thank you.